Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, good morning. Before I do the approval of agenda, we do have a few people that we need for the minutes that are on there. Felicia, last name? Oops, we have to unmute you, I'm sorry. Okay.
Last name's Ledbetter, L-E-D-B-E-T-T-E-R.
Thank you. Were there any other ones? There was a phone call, somebody on a conference call.
What's in the service laptop? Okay.
Whose phone is that?
Yes, John Zimmerman Green, past supervisor, Butler County Supervisor, just listening in to see the procedure.
Hi, John, how are you?
Pretty good.
Do we have any other ones that we? There's a Galaxy tab out there.
It's up there.
Okay, it was carried. And then the service laptop?
And a service laptop. With no mic. If they, who's ever on a service laptop, if they could turn, type back to us. Type your name into the chat. Well, from there, just, we have everybody muted and we'll keep them muted until public comments unless we have questions. From there, I will go to the approval of agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for today. We have to unmute BJ.
I'll make a, I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, next is approval of minutes of 482020.
I'll make a motion to approve the April 8th 2020 minutes.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Now is approval of claims for payment of 4152020.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims for payment dated April 15th 2020 as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, now I have is utility permits. No utility permits, anything with secondary roads? Pardon me? Yes?
All right, got a couple of updates for you guys that have come up lately. We talked about the speed limit in Alden at one point, we got a request. We don't have any agreement with the city, so if they want to change that, that is up to the city. So, if you hear from Randy again, you can let him know, like, and I've already let the city know, like, that.
Okay.
The question did come in, but yeah, they have jurisdiction, they're not us, because they're a bigger town. Then we also, you'll love this one, we received a request for an engine brake ordinance. And they were just talking about one area at S-56 and D-15, just south of Ackley where that curve is, where all the, you know, they changed their truck route ever since they redid Highway 57, so.
This is a second request we've had for engine brakes?
Probably way more than second would be my guess. But I'd assume it's one of those things, for every person that wants it, there's probably three truckers that don't.
And I know we looked at it a little bit and looked at some different things other counties were doing. I don't know. Is it something we'd want to look at after, an after hours or an after timeline, engine brake ordinance?
You can try, it's still really hard to enforce.
Well, I know it'd be hard to enforce, but. I've had one person call me back, we should have it during all the time. But at nighttime when people are in bed and they're rattling.
How you do a countywide one, do we put a sign up at every road that comes into the county?
I know.
It'd be quite overwhelming. You know, area-specific ones probably aren't terrible, you know, kind of like cities do, but yeah, when you think about countywide, that's, that's a lot.
Okay. Are there?
And you have to catch them in the act, I mean.
Correct, and if they need to emergency stop for any reason, then it's legal again, so.
So what do you guys think? Area-specific is what we've seen.
Right, I think it's going to be hard to enforce, and I'd actually prefer to have Dave or JD weigh in on it along with Attorney Meyer to see.
Exactly.
What the means of enforcement and penalty are.
Okay. Well, why don't we have them all sit and listen to this and meet again in a work session? So we can have a little more behind it.
Find out what the options are and.
Yeah.
And their thoughts, I agree.
And try to put something together just specifically for that.
Okay.
What else you got for us? All right.
All right.
Why don't I go ahead, it's 9:02, I'll open the public hearing on the road vacation. These are streets and alleys of Cleves. Taylor, you want to talk about them a little bit?
Sure, was Joe on there too somewhere? We got a question for him, okay, so Joe's available if we got a question for him. He's the one that did the legwork. So we've sent a letter to everyone in Cleves, our first request to do this came from Vince Lindeman, he's your, your blue properties up there in the northwest corner. But then after it got started, you know, we've only heard positive things from people, so that's pretty good. But yeah, none of these streets and alleys are used for anything other than one's a driveway. And other than that, it's just giving the property back to the people because the town never became the town they thought it was going to, similar to a lot of our other little ones around here. So, I'd entertain any questions, if there's anybody out there in the public that has a comment, we should field it as well.
So let's go ahead and unmute all. Are there any public comments? Were there any written comments?
Just emails from the people saying they were okay with it.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so if anybody has any questions, this is the time or concerns.
And all we're doing today is vacating. But our current plan is to deed it as you have in your picture.
When will that be, Taylor?
When will that be, Taylor?
I don't know. Couple weeks, that's kind of up to Daryl, Daryl's the one that kind of looks over the deeds for us, so Joe's already gotten done, so after this, we can get him to him, and it'll probably take him a couple weeks to a month. Depends how busy Daryl is.
Well, under the circumstances, now's a pretty good time to say that you could get a look at him.
Is that another one, we need to know who it is? For the minutes?
We had somebody call in, last number 0597, could they identify themselves for the minutes?
I'm Lonnie Bevvy.
I'm Lonnie Bevvy.
He's one of our landowners here.
So Lonnie, did you have any questions in the public hearing?
No, just as long as the dry laser alleys get deeded over to the people who own land, the J-12.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, hearing no other public comments. I could ask that for a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next we have is a resolution to vacate streets and alleys of Cleves.
Lance, I'd make a motion to approve the resolution to vacate the streets and alleys of Cleves as presented in the resolution document.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
BJ.
Aye.
Renee.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. Next we have is a receipt of an animal feeding operation construction permit. Oops, secondary road's ours, sorry, Taylor.
Yep, so it's getting to the time of year, and you guys expressed to me in the past that you want to be involved when we switch to our 410s. We're ready to do that, our main reason we're ready is the highway between Hubbard and New Providence, we want to start ripping the bad culverts out and replacing them so that we can repave it next year. So, they'd like a long day to do that, so that way the road's only closed for a day and it doesn't have to be closed overnight. So they're kind of our main force, but this is generally when we go to 410s anyway. And, yeah, if we got to go above and beyond that, there, I always know that too.
Okay.
Well, I'm okay, I think the frostbills didn't hit like they normally do this year.
No.
And I don't think we're looking at it any anymore.
Nope.
Thank heavens.
This cold shouldn't really penetrate the ground right now.
So, yeah, whenever you're ready.
Okay.
Thank you.
You bet.
You guys?
Do we need to make a motion to that effect?
No, I just.
Okay, nope, that's fine with me too.
Yep, and Taylor and I spoke about it, and I'm very comfortable with his, you know, knowledge of the situation, so, yep.
And when you do do 410s during a holiday week, they come back to 5H, right?
No.
Okay.
We started this last year, they worked two elevens and a 10.
Okay.
Up until the 10 closes, so, or on the unique situation, the fourth is on a Saturday, so I'm going to give them the Monday as their recognized holiday.
Okay.
Because after speaking with some of them, and that's the holiday where you tend to stay up a little later, so I figured.
I don't understand.
Yeah, you know, the option was Thursday or Monday, so I gave them the Monday. And they said like that, that's kind of what they did in the past, was the Monday, so.
Okay.
Yep, I did forget you did that last year.
Everyone was okay with that. And yeah, the two elevens and the 10, they liked that too, so that worked out pretty good.
Okay. And if it does turn into any situations where we need to pull them back in, we talked about that, where you'd pull them back in as needed for emergency purposes.
Yep, that's no problem.
Okay. Nick, thank you.
Yep.
Next is a receipt of animal feeding operation construction permit, Tribe B site, section eight of Alden-Harden Township. And this is a 5,000-head site.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to acknowledge the receipt of said feeding operation construction permit, Tribe B site, section eight, Alden-Harden Township.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, now we have to set time and date for the public hearing for this.
Lance, I'd make a motion to set the time and date as April 29th, 2020, at 10:00 AM, via electronic meeting, or as otherwise declared by the governor of Iowa, for the Tribe B site, section eight, Alden-Harden Township.
And I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
The login information for that will be the same as it is for this meeting and all the other board supervisors' meetings.
So, the login information would be the same as for this meeting?
Is that Zoom?
The Zoom. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next I have is a receipt of an animal feeding operation construction permit, Ferris Pork Site, section 13 of Ellis Township. This is a expansion of a site from 2,496 to 4,992.
I will make a motion to accept the receipt of, or acknowledge the receipt of the animal feeding operation construction permit, Ferris Pork Site in section 13 of Ellis Township.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, now we have a set time and date for public hearing for Ferris Pork Site, section 13, Ellis Township.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make the motion to set the date of April 29th at 11:00 AM for, for the public hearing.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? It'll be via Zoom or in this boardroom as we're doing today.
Right.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we have is a loan agreement for Radcliffe Legion Rebuild, can you unmute Daryl for us, please? Come on up. Daryl, you sent us an email here right before the meeting.
Yes, I did.
So were there concerns on this?
There was just some.
There's some questions.
Just some questions about the $5,000 forgiveness, and I think that it, I look at the $5,000 forgiveness of this as being conditional upon making regular full payments. Anytime that there would be a missed payment along the way, it would be treated as a default. Of course, the county could always waive the default and, you know, accept a late payment, that sort of a thing. But assuming that the county decided to treat it as a default, the full amount would be owed and that last $5,000 would not be forgiven. So if you look at the payment section, which talks about the quarterly payments and then the forgiveness, when it's paid down to $20,000, and then look at the section under late fee, there is no late fee, but it does indicate that the relief that the county could seek would be to treat it as a default and accelerate the full amount due. So when you look at those two sections, it does treat that $5,000 as a conditional forgiveness of being a faithful, timely, you know, payer of those, those amounts along the way.
Okay, thank you. And this is loan through our lost funds?
Yep, the funds are coming out of the lost fund, so when you sign it, I'll get Heath to sign it, and then we'll get Jessica to sign it.
Okay. Do you have anything else for us?
No, I was just gonna follow up.
Nope, sorry.
Daryl did, so we're good.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Well, from there, we have a loan agreements for Radcliffe and Legion Rebuild.
Well, from there, we'll face with rebuild.
I'll make a motion to approve the loan agreement for the Radcliffe Legion Rebuild as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, now I have the county recorder's report of fees collected.
I'll make a motion to approve the county recorder's report of fees collected for the month of March.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, now we have is a proclamation of Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Carrie Kubi is on, on the video, so, so could we unmute Carrie? Carrie?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Carrie.
How are you guys?
We're doing well.
Thank you.
Is there somebody else on too that you know of, Carrie, that would want to speak?
Well, there's a couple people, Felicia Ledbetter is with our organization.
Okay.
JD Holmes is actually one of our board members, Rocky Reins is one of our board members, Lisa Bus is one of our board members, so we're well represented today.
All right.
Is there anybody that would like to read the proclamation?
If you give me a minute, I don't have it quite pulled up in front of me, if you give me a minute though, I could find it. Or Rocky, if Rocky, Rocky was the original creator.
Okay.
Oh, here it is. Okay. Rocky, do you have it? Sorry, I should have been prepared.
Yeah, we need to unmute Rocky.
I do have it, yeah.
Rocky?
Okay, go ahead, Rocky.
Okay. So, 2020 Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation, sorry, my dog is barking. Whereas in federal fiscal year 2018, 4.3 million reports were made to child protection services. Whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. Whereas our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of Harden County. Whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. Whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. Whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. Whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. Whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas, prevention remains the best defense for our children and families.
Thank you. I could entertain a motion.
All right, I will make a motion to approve the Harden County Child Abuse Prevention Coalition's Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Roll call.
Renee.
Aye.
BJ.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye, motion carries, and thank you.
Thank you.
Next I have is an employment statement of understanding Central Iowa Community Services. I don't know if Lynn wants to talk on this, but it's pretty self-explanatory. Lynn?
Lynn, do you have any comments? Is he unmuted?
No, it's just, because the position, this is the person who replaced Carol, and Carol's full-time, this person is part-time, so it's at .75 FTE. But because technically the position is 100% funded by the region, this is just an agreement with the county, between the county and the region that says that, I guess the region's acknowledging that they're paying for her at that .75 FTE.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to approve the employment statement of understanding with Central Iowa Community Services.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is public comments, I have Doug Morris, if we can unmute him, who wanted to make a comment.
Good morning, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, just wanted to spend about 60 seconds with an update and then be available for any questions. From the hospital's reports perspective to the supervisors, our goal the last week's has been to try to stay a step ahead, not a step behind with all of this. We've done that through a collaboration across the county. Special shout out to Thomas Creighton, the emergency management piece of this, ambulance services, long-term care, home health, everybody working together, and what the hospital's been doing is try to prepare both a process for potential COVID patients and yet keep as many services as possible. So from a service standpoint, we continue to see patients as we're able, non-COVID, and then also a process for the tents and emergency room, et cetera, still up and running. The financial part of the report is, as you can imagine, shutting down basically a good part of the hospital has created a financial gap, and we're working to fill that through a variety of sources, federal and otherwise. And right now, our cash flows, with help from the stimulus and our hope for the PPP program, we're able to report that our cash flows at least over the foreseeable months can allow us to meet all debt obligations. And we're working on it every day, trying to put probably at this point a one-year financial planning horizon, expecting it will take at least that long to sort out and make any decisions along the way needed to kind of, again, care for the COVID pandemic and patients who are still having health issues and need to be served. With that, I'll stop, I don't want to go on too long, but certainly available to answer any questions anybody might have.
If anybody has any questions out there, you have the capability of unmuting yourself?
If I could speak, this is Carrie Kubi again, and I wanted to just make a quick statement and say that as Chair of the Harden County Child Abuse Prevention Council, I want to thank you all for signing the Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Proclamation. And our organization wants to thank you for your continued support of children in Harden County and all that you do to protect them and make sure they're out of harms way. We know that your support is prevalent in April, but it continues throughout the year. So, I can again express my gratitude on our council's feelings for our board of supervisors, and we know how lucky we are to have you so involved in what we do. So, again, thank you for your time, especially during this pandemic when it is so important to make sure that children are not in harms way.
Well, thank you. Doug, I had no comments, I didn't know if anybody else did either. Are there any other public comments?
It's Julie Dunn, I have a question for Sheriff McDaniel. I was wondering how many ICE detainees we have housed in the jail right now?
Right at the moment today, I could tell you I could find that out, Julie, and let you know.
Okay, good, I have another question, is there much, what's the rate of transfer of them in and out? Is there a lot of movement with ICE detainees coming in and leaving?
No, we've decreased our population significantly and have implemented some guidelines for eliminating as much possible exposure or issues as we possibly.
So they're not being transferred at the rate they were before? Are they basically staying in the jail now and not being moved out?
They are, but we're not, not as often, we're doing a lot of video court, that type of thing, where normally transport, we've significantly reduced the need to do that.
Okay, do you get it, like, some weekly maybe?
It depends on the week.
Okay, is there a way to get that kind of information?
I'll see what I can do for you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other public comments? Any other business?
I just want to weigh in again, just to let the customers know that this is Michelle, the treasurer, that they still do have until April 30th to pay their taxes without any penalties, so don't panic if you haven't got them paid. Don't panic if you can't pay them, we'd rather have you have food on your table. The serious thing would come in too being is you want to have your taxes paid by the third Monday of June, because that is when our tax sale is, that's when somebody can pay your taxes for you, then your interest rate would go up, and you would have kind of like a lien on your property. So if there's at all possibility that you could have them paid before then, that would be your best bet. But if it is the case where you can't, you still have time to pay them, it's just going to cost more for those taxes to be paid back.
Thank you.
Lance, I'd like to say something, this is Donna.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, we recently paid our vehicle registration through the Dropbox, and very quickly got our tags through the mail, and I'd like to thank Michelle, it worked out very nicely, very speedily, and there was absolutely no question or problem at all.
Good, thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
It's good to hear.
Good to hear.
Thank you very much, we're, we're working hard to keep our, our citizens up to date and, um, keep their situations, what they need to get done, done, and we're trying to handle them as, as fast as we can, um, because we know that people rely on getting around, even those are extensions and everything, we still would rather do their business in a timely manner and get them taken care of, and I appreciate the compliment, thank you.
Any other business? From there, I could ask for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned, motion carries, we're adjourned.